Ah, Steve Bishop.
Present.
Terry Doty.
Present.
Jay DeRozan.
Present.
George Hansen.
Here.
Crystal was out.
Chris Mark.
Mark just walked in. And Richard Peterson.
Here.
Review and acceptance of minutes?
Motion to have been accepted as drafted.
Second. Shares report, I have none. Code enforcement officers report.
There's a potential buyer of Spring Fountain. Obviously, there's, you know, nothing's been closed, nothing's, so there's nothing official. There's probably not a lot I can really say about any of that, but, um, could be coming to a close. We'll have to wait and see, I guess, mid-July is when the closing date is supposed to be.
Oh, wow, that's pretty good, actually.
Yeah.
Good.
Yep.
So, um, met with Whole Oceans, but have not seen anybody over there yet. Expecting it any day. Hopefully soon, they're gonna be over there doing site work. Um, I think if there's any other big things going on.
Do they need to come back before they do anything? I thought they still had some outstanding.
Well, their, their Lot 4 stuff that we approved is fine if they haven't made any substantial, you know, lightbulb-shattering changes. They still have to come to me for building permits and plan review and stuff, but that wouldn't affect them getting started on site. Now, the Lot 3 that they purchased after the permit was done, that, they have to either do a new SLOTA or amend the SLOTA from Lot 4. They have to do new DNP permitting, all the stormwater stuff, and obviously they have to come to us, because they haven't, we haven't approved anything for Lot 3 yet, so.
Do they own any kind of a time crunch for the permits if they've already been built?
No, because if you remember, when they came to us, they asked for a 10-year permit.
They did.
And we said we couldn't do that, that the max we could do was five years.
That's right, yes.
And the reason that they wanted that was because they expected it was gonna take 10 years for full build-out. Because it's just a massive, massive facility. However, um, you know, when we issued the permit, it was because we expected them to to need that length of time to build it, not because we thought it would take five years for them to start, but, where we were at, um, that was in September of 19, so we're two, two and a half years in. They will have to come and renew those permits when the time comes. That's it for that.
Limited public forum, an opportunity for the public to address the board on matters related to land use or planning in the town of Bucksport. No one's here.
Since all of the land sales going on and the building sales going on, you'd think that we ought to have some developments coming up.
You mean, like, housing developments?
No, I think the properties, all, you know, lot, building lots.
Anything.
Subdivisions.
Unfinished business, none. New business, none. Administrative business. A review of proposed marijuana language in the Appendix K Land Use Ordinance. Luke has spent a lot of work on this, it sounds like. Put a lot of time into educating himself about all of this, so go ahead and lay it out for us.
So, I'll go through the proposed changes to the Appendix K. And also, you have a copy there of Chapter 6, which is the Business License and Permit Regulations. Proposed changes there would be direct correlation with what we've got over in the Schedule K. If we're gonna commit adult use, then we have to have licensing regulations and structures in place in order for that, so they kinda go together. So, I'll get to that second. And I'll tell you right up front, I don't have the Airbnb language completed. I tried really hard on it, I just couldn't get it all done. And the zoning change and the marijuana stuff was the more pressing at this time, so I focused on getting that done and getting it right. Because there are there are some companies there kinda banging down the door and waiting for us to get this through.
Yep. Good decision.
So, so, right off the bat, um, as we know, we talked about in the last two meetings, and I don't know if he's showing this up here, so I'll try and scroll down through at the same time. But it's all right in front of you. So, retail marijuana is no longer what we call it, it's adult use. And anytime you see something that just says marijuana and doesn't say medical in front of it, it's adult use. It's pretty much just, that's the way the state does it. Anything that has to do with medical says medical marijuana in front of it. But the first thing I did here, well, actually, the very first thing I did here isn't even related to marijuana. It's restaurants. We recently had a lady approach us about putting a restaurant in where, I mean, probably all seen that the Grendel Insurance Building is for sale?
Yeah.
That's just the building, it's not the business. And this lady wanted to put a restaurant in that, in that building, and it would've fit, I wouldn't, you know, obviously they'd had to make modifications for cooking goods and all that kinda thing, but, restaurants are allowed in the C-1 district. Much like marijuana, it's where we want it, we say we want it up there on US Route 1, right? Well, the left side of Route 1 is the C-1 district. The right side of Route 1 is Route 1 Shoreland. Route 1 Shoreland doesn't allow marijuana. Route 1 Shoreland doesn't allow restaurants. Route 1 Shoreland says that any building that goes on that side of the road has to look like a residential house.
That is feet from McDonald's. Tell me, tell me how that's a thing.
It's what the ordinance says.
How did McDonald's get there?
Pre the ordinance. McDonald's was built in the 80s, and this was written after that.
Is that why we have the ordinance, because people didn't want?
I don't know. But I'm proposing, and you see it here, that I put L-2, meaning Planning Board, L-2 means the Planning Board has to review it.
Yep.
L-1 means I can issue the permit myself.
Yep.
Everything you're gonna see tonight is gonna say L-2.
Yep.
But I put restaurants, L-2, under the R-1 Shoreland.
Thank you.
Meaning that would be allowed on that side of the street.
Yep.
I don't know whether you guys think we should change other things, like, I mean, there's recreational facilities, but there's really not enough room on that side of the street for that. Actually, that's already allowed. The only other thing that's not allowed there is taverns. And I don't know why that would be an issue either. Do we have a reason why we wouldn't want a tavern on that side of the road? So, should I change that too? Yep.
I think so.
Almost everything on that side of the road is some sort of a business, isn't it?
It is, correct.
And it's headed that way.
And that's the industrial, or not industrial, but commercial.
Side of town.
Yeah, I mean, if not there, then where?
So, in the future, changing it to L-2, let's say, I don't know, someone has to put a Pizza Hut or whatever, you know, and so it starts to look like lots of McDonald's, you know, lots of fast food, but it just starts to lose its character. Do we have the right to say no to a Pizza Hut, but yes to somebody that's going to build within?
No.
We are not friends if you're saying no to Pizza Hut, I'm just saying.
Well, no, no. I don't know. Whatever, you pick a KFC, you can go on. They're all their own thing. Well, and that's my guess is why they put that they didn't want more restaurants there is because they didn't want that to be, you know, Burger King, Wendy's, McDonald's.
Otherwise, it starts to look like High Street Millsburg.
I understand.
You know, and some people think that's good or bad, whether or not, I mean, I'm trying to, I just, like, the whole reason for this was maybe, was it with that, or maybe it were people on the Planning Board who owned restaurants that just kind of, like, I don't know.
I don't know.
It's, it's a great view, I mean, you, you really, you know, to sit there, it's, it's a beautiful spot. And I'm sure it would entice people to dine, just some, for just some of that location, so.
Yeah. It, it's really, it's hard to say. I mean, yes, there's the possibility of, of fast food coming in there, but there's, there's a lot of rules and requirements about that, about fast food and about drive-throughs.
Doesn't architecture, though, and buildings have to look a certain way?
Well, right now, the ordinance says that any, any business on that side of the street has to look residential. I was gonna change that too, but, and that's why we're here, so you guys can discuss this, and if you don't like something, that's what your job is to do, is to say, no, I don't think we should do that.
Yeah, I don't like McDonald's, I don't like Leadbenders, I don't like all that. It just reminds me of a bigger city, and it is taken away from, you know, small town.
Yeah, but big business gives big tax, and that's what's going to happen.
But they could still do it, but that's what I'm saying, look, make it look more, I guess, one say quaint?
Yeah.
Or whatever, instead of like, down in LA.
There is a McDonald's down in the Freeport area, you know?
That's a house.
Right, it's.
Yep.
But that doesn't, you wouldn't know it's a McDonald's, you'd have to really kinda search for it to see if it's a McDonald's.
So, you wanna allow restaurants, but keep the closet, says it has to look residential?
I don't know, I, I, I don't know, I'm just saying, it can be done. Then again, we don't get the kinda traffic report, because we don't have an L-L-D now, like, right, so it's.
Get a lot of traffic in the summer along that stretch.
Each business owner is gonna have their own idea of what they want their business to be. We shouldn't be stepping on their toes, telling what their vision should or shouldn't be.
I'm just listening to everybody.
That's my opinion.
Yeah, no, I don't, I'm, just, you know, I had a house and I rented it, and it, it was my business, right, and I appreciate having that right for me, so, as opposed to a monthly, but,
You know, John was still on the board here, we, I'm sure he would have some objections.
John?
John. What's got the big white house? John, John, because John's last name.
Big White House, on Route 1?
Yeah. Good-sized White House. Just this side of McDonald's. He added to a couple, well, when he was still on the board here, he added.
You don't mean Tomasco's old place?
Hmm?
You don't mean the Tomasco place?
No.
Well, okay, well, his objection.
20 years, I can't see his last friggin' name. John.
I draw a blank, I draw an absolute blank.
Yeah. Well.
John and a big white house, that doesn't matter.
His objection would be one, that he didn't want businesses next to his house?
Probably.
But it is US Route 1.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But all of those buildings there have typically been residential until they were bought by attorneys and ICAR and, I mean, they are residential facilities.
They were.
They, they were.
Well, you know what, said at what is now McDonald's.
Ward's Garage.
We have Ward's Garage, they're mechanic's garage.
And for a couple of years. My grandpa's garage is there for a couple of years.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, I can tell you the McDonald's looks better than that did.
Agreed on that.
So, I mean, everything has been pushing the commercial side of life on that side. In that lot that's for sale across from Family Dollar, that's open for all kinds of opportunities, if someone wants to put the money into it on a commercial side, I saw people looking at it the other day.
If, if that develops enough, would that, I mean, that could potentially be another trap, like, I'd like, I don't know, depending upon what goes in, how big it is, I mean, that.
On Park Street?
Yeah, on that, maybe not, on that intersection, depending what goes in there, that, I mean, that could be, and that's not the worst thing, you know, that, that could happen, but I mean, I, if we're gonna have a commercial zone, I mean, like, let's get business in here, right?
Well, that's just it, that is the commercial zone.
Right.
On the other side of the street is all C-1. But on the river side of the street, it's Route 1 Shoreland. So, it's, as far as the Pizza Hut, the Burger King, the Wendy's, the other side of the street, all of that, it can go there. And my friend John would, you know, it's, it's allowed.
But what about this person that wanted to buy that property, couldn't do it because of this?
And I told her that I was gonna attempt to change it, but that I couldn't guarantee anything, because it was really up to you folks, and then it, then ultimately up to the council.
Right.
And that there would be public hearings and stuff, and in this market, they can't wait, you know, somebody would still buy that before.
Yeah, before we get that changed.
Four years ago, I could've said, hey, you know, do a purchase and sale agreement pending approval. And that would've been fine, but in this market, stuff doesn't last long enough for that, so.
I am, I love our restaurants in this town, but to have, like, a different one, I think I've eaten everything off everything, so, I wouldn't buy another restaurant for a second.
I don't think I'm allowed to disclose who I talked with, but there's a lot of people in this town that were asking this person to come here, and it's a type of food we don't have, so.
That's, adds value to the community, by a hundred percent.
What about, um, Steverin Chouse building? Isn't that supposed to be like another family shop or deli or something?
That's what the newspaper said, but nobody's talked to me.
I, yeah, I would've thought.
You would've thought before they bought that building that they would've come and talked to me, but they haven't asked me a single question, so.
But back on topic, good job on making that, seeing that, and just making that an L-2, that's, I think that's great.
Well.
Let's do that. That's great.
It's up to everybody, though, okay, I got your opinion. Mark seems like he's on the fence.
Well, I, I think it's.
No, I'm, I'm on offense, I'm, I'm, let's, you know, let's bring some business in, let's get some choices here, off, people like options, they like choices.
Traffic flow is the only concern I have. I, I think we, you know, I don't know if you got the traffic flow, you could have these businesses come in. Is there any room to widen, is there any room for turnoff, is there any, I mean, we could be.
We squeezed it into McDonald's.
I saw that.
You know, I mean.
But you take the Dunkin' Donuts up here, okay, as soon as the traffic backs up on that, you're stuck until somebody can turn in.
Yep.
And, and, you know, these things are all nice, but we gotta look at, how is it gonna flow?
Well, and that's something that we certainly have the right to look at when a business applies, you know, before anything happens, we can say the traffic, you know, the pattern doesn't work. I mean, I think of, I know it was Orland, not Bucksport, but when that trade winds went in up there, there was a lot of study and stuff done on traffic patterns and stuff. You know, we can say you have to pony up in order to add a turning lane, or those types of things.
He says, in there now?
That's in, that's in our authority, if, if we feel it's required for the safety of, you know, and then they have the option of saying, now, we're not gonna spend the money to do that, but pull their project. So, you know, obviously, it's not something I throw out there lightly, but we have those options, is what I'm saying. It's not something where we have to say, well, and again, it's already allowed on the other side of the road. So, if Pizza decides to go where, um, the old store, Ed Mercer's store.
Ed Mercer's.
Then we have the same issue.
That's, that's not for sale, is it?
The issue was.
Not yet.
It's supposed to be.
This case in point, someone wanted to bring a business to Bucksport, building was for sale, plan shot down because of this. At least the door would be open to make something happen.
I'm agreeing. I'm agreeing, as long as we have flexibility to look at traffic, I'm all for it.
All right, I'm not hearing any huge dissent. We're gonna have another meeting about it next month, and public hearing as well, so, um, we got a lot to cover tonight. Marijuana social clubs are no longer a thing, it's not in any state definition or anything. Nor in the state are you allowed to consume marijuana other than on your own private property. Or essentially, I guess, if you had a friend or whatnot, you could do it on their property with their permission, but you can't do it in public, and you can't do it as a business. And none of the uses that we're potentially allowing, it's not allowed to be consumed on-site at any of those either. Oh, um, taverns, were we gonna change that to L-2, is that, is that kinda the same as a restaurant?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I guess. Um, okay, so scrolling down. Each marijuana store is what the state uses as a term for adult use. I put L-2, and I put in the C-1 district, and I put in the R-1 Shoreland district, meaning either side of the road on US Route 1. Does that jive with what you all had said the last?
I believe it does, as, as I recall, it does.
So, medical marijuana caregiver retail store, that is, medical marijuana caregiver retail store is what we have overall. So, if somebody that has a caregiver's license and grows their own marijuana can sell it in their store, the state laws limit how much they can have, and how much they can sell, and all that stuff, we don't have to worry about that. We just have to worry about whether we're gonna allow it or not allow it. It was currently allowed on downtown, and it was allowed in the C-1. I took it out of the downtown, for our conversations, and I added the R-1 Shoreland. Medical marijuana registered dispensary is similar to a medical marijuana caregiver store, except for that handout I gave you last month. There's much more, um, there's no limit on how much they can grow. Like, if they need more for their store, they can grow as much as they need for their store. A caregiver can't do that. If he has more demand than he can grow, he has to buy it from another caregiver, or a dispensary, or someplace else. So, that's kind of the difference, one of the differences between those two, that's a big simplification, because there's a lot to that dispensary thing. But in any case, I allowed it same places, C-1 and R-1. R, I'm sorry, R-1 Shoreland. Big difference. So, scrolling down. We had a note previously that only allowed that land use on the street level of a principal structure fronting Main Street. Obviously, it doesn't apply anymore, so I took that out. Scrolling down. We come to, uh, production uses. So, those ones I just talked about with mercantile. Under production uses, there's no such thing, according to the state, as, well, the retail, the retail marijuana facility. So, I changed that. We have marijuana cultivation facility. A cultivation facility does not, well, they do not sell marijuana to the public. They grow it, and they sell it to stores. A cultivation facility can also be owned by a dispensary. So, in other words, a dispensary, remember I told you there's, they're unlimited as to how much they can grow? Dispensary can have their cultivation facility at a different property. They'll have to have two licenses from us, one for the dispensary, and one for the cultivation facility. But from the state, they're covered with one license, because if they have a registered dispensary, they're allowed to have the cultivation facility. But a cultivation facility is a separate thing, it's just growing. And this, I don't understand why, but they're only allowed to sell their stuff from a cultivation facility to that, like, a cultivation facility for a dispensary can only sell medical. And a cultivation facility otherwise can only sell adult use. They can't, if I have a huge cultivation facility on my property, I can't sell to Verona, I can only sell to an adult use store. And the reasoning for that is, I, I don't, I don't really know, other than, hello?
Okay.
It's being tracked, um, it's being tracked at the, uh, production, at the, at the growth. And you guys can come in and sit down if you'd like.
Thank you.
And, and it's being tracked at the store, and they keep track of where those plants go. So, the cultivation facility, because it's a facility just for growing, not for selling, other than to stores, I put down that it would be allowed in the C-1, C-2, and C-3, as well as, um, the, uh.
ID and IDO?
Industrial district.
Yep.
And the Route 15 district, which is the, Route 15 RC is within 1,000 feet of Route 15.
Okay.
And I put down the R-1 district. Now, the R-1 district is, you guys can shoot that down if you want, it, it's basically, R-1 is just about every road in town within 1,000 feet of the road. So, once you get out into the boonies, it becomes rural too. But, like, where I live on Jacob Acquon Road, that's R-1. Bucks Mills, R-1. But I'm thinking a cultivation facility is kind of like a farm, I mean, it's a, you're not talking heavy traffic.
Right.
And you're not talking.
You need larger land amounts to be able to make it happen?
I don't see any reason why it would hurt anything for it to be out there. It does have to be inside a structure. I didn't allow outdoor. You can allow outdoor, but I didn't. It's a whole different set of rules for that.
Okay.
It just seemed like a lot more issues, and older issues, and indoors, easier to control, all that stuff. These folks here are interested in putting a marijuana store in our town.
Okay.
Marijuana products manufacturing facility. That I only allowed in the C-3 zone, which is the industrial park and the industrial buildings. Same with the medical manufacturing, I'm sorry, medical marijuana product manufacturing facility. The reasoning for that is because those, um, can use harsh chemicals and dangerous gases and stuff, that probably not something you want in a residential area. So, the only one left other than those is. the only one left other than those is the well, in the rural section I took out cultivation, because I put it in in the other one, so I didn't, it doesn't need to be in both. And then um, I took out growing facilities because that's not a term the state uses anymore. They call it cultivation facility. The other thing was, he had a note under, when, when growing facilities was in there, he had a note L5, which said that that land use is limited to lots with frontage on River Road and it must be within four miles from the beginning of the River Road. Which is kinda nondescript, but I think what he was trying to do was keep it close to town because again, they were thinking police response and stuff. But like you said at the last meeting, I think that's ten years ago thinking.
I, yeah.
I think so.
I would agree.
So, but, so that doesn't really apply anymore. So the uh, testing facility is the last thing. Um, the SARS known as, it previously was on here. It said retail, I just took that off because we don't use that term anymore. I, I allowed it in the C3, which is the industrial park and then the industrial zones. Any questions about those things?
No, I think you did a really good job breaking that down.
Alright, so then we get into the actual regulations. Oh, before we skip to that, on page 1-6, that's where the line was, I removed, which said that all new buildings occupied for commercial or non-commercial use in this district must have a residential architectural style. I took that out because that was directly linked to R1 shoreline. What if we just said restaurants would be okay? Sue and I gapped about it for a little bit and we, we thought it didn't make much sense to leave that in there, but that's just our opinion. So, did you guys have any thoughts on that?
It's 1-4.
1-6.
It's 1-6.
And I know it didn't
And it's only, it's only for that district on the water, right? I don't know, I mean, they can look residential, but I don't know if people, like would you enjoy living there? I think the traffic in the summer would drive me crazy, right? So it's, I mean, it's really a commercial zone, I, I don't know.
Well, to me, that's a big difference. It is commercial, it's not residential, it's commercial. So, requiring someone on one side of the road to make the business look like a house or the other side doesn't have to make the business. To me, it makes no sense, I mean, it's, it's, I don't know, one man you're finding, I just, I don't think it made sense to have that. I, I think it should be out.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, we'll leave it that way for now and see if anything comes up in the public hearing. The next page, I took retail social clubs, I take out again, but it's not something that was in the state state's rules anymore. Um, and then at the bottom of that page, 1-1 marijuana is, beginning of the what was it? So, 13 point nine, point one, point one.
Item 7.
Item 7 is the first one.
That's an addition?
Yes, anything that's underlined like that, it's actually red if you, like if you look up here. But it didn't print that way, I'm sorry. But it is underlined, anything that's underlined is new and anything that's crossed out was there but is being removed.
Yeah.
So um, medical marijuana caregiver retail store, medical marijuana registered dispensary or marijuana store, again, remember that's adult use, is not allowed as a home-based merchant use or an accessory use. That was strictly because I didn't want somebody to try and do it in their garage or something, you know? Just makes it clear that that's not allowed. All following requirements apply to caregiver store, uh, registered dispensary or marijuana store. On-site consumption or smoking may not be conducted. Land use can't be within, it used to just say 500 feet of the closest property line of a lot occupied with a school at the time. I added more descriptive. 500 feet of the property line of a pre-existing private school, that's kinda the same, but then 500 feet of the property line of property used primarily for religious worship, related religious activities, property used for pre-existing licensed daycare, recreational areas designated for use by children up to 18 years in age, which there's nothing over there currently, anything like that. And then 400 feet from the property line of designated municipal safe zones.
Did that 400 feet, where did that 400 feet come from? It's usually 500.
I, I looked at a lot of other towns and stuff and it's
That's what they're doing.
It can be either. But if you remember, we had that discussion about safe zones at our last meetings.
Yep.
And um, I thought that where marijuana's legal, that it didn't apply. But from my research, I think it does apply. So the fact that we made the Waterford Parkway a safe zone pretty much means that all of Main Street wouldn't be allowed anyways.
Correct.
But I didn't know that until I started researching this. So I, it's just as well that we're taking the downtown out of. Anyway. And then direction as to how the setback of measured direct straight shortest distance line between the property lines of the two. The fact that this is in there, a church, a daycare, anything like that that wants to come in and be closer than that, it's on them. If they, if they choose to do that and they wanna, well, I don't even think we could allow it.
No.
If it was
If it wasn't pre-existing.
Certain things, but a church we could. I mean, if, if they wanted to be there and they wanted to be that close to it, that's on them. But if it was a pre-existing church, then they, we wouldn't allow it. But there are no churches up there, up in that area, so. Security measures. Required to have surveillance camera operating 24/7, 30-day video storage, monitoring all entries, interior, exterior of the premises to discourage and facilitate recording of criminal acts. Uh, some real basic stuff, door and window com, combination video motion detector intrusion systems. A locking safe fixed to the premises suitable for storage of marijuana and cash stored overnight. Lot of that stuff's great out of the state. Uh, exterior lighting that illuminates the exterior walls, licensed premises dusted on either constantly on or with motion detectors. Deadbolt locks on doors, locks on windows. For adult use facilities, methods to ensure that no one under the age of 21 has access to the marijuana products. And then um, admission of odorous or toxic matter in such quantities is to be readily detectable at any point along lot lines so as to produce a public nuisance or hazard is prohibited. Violations. Violations of this standard should be considered a public nuisance. Order control planes shall be submitted as part of the site plan review. They fail to bring it into compliance within 30 days of notice of violation, CEO can refer the matter to prosecution. Pretty standard stuff there.
A lot of that you pulled off from the state, you said?
From the state and other towns that have already gone through this whole process. All marijuana operations must provide for the safe, sanitary and secure disposal of byproducts or material resulting from the operation and must submit an operations plan to the planning board with the site plan, which details such byproducts or materials will be disposed of. There should be posted conspicuous locations inside the stores. Legible sign containing the following information. I think I have to read all of that too. If I'm going too fast, just save them.
Where are you?
Uh, I am about to start on uh, number 13. Oh, I'm sorry, no I'm not. I skipped the signs.
Just what I'm behind or ahead?
Did you learn?
So, um, on 11B.
11B, yep.
A high likelihood of reaching persons under 21 involving the signs, like who determines that?
That language actually came from the state, but that is I think they're kinda talking about like cartoon type characters, things that would be aimed towards children. Think of Jo- Campbell, I don't know. That's what popped into my mind, I, I don't really know.
So, is that your call?
Is what my, oh, the uh
Yeah, like, are you the arbiter of that? I'm not saying you're not a good one, I'm just curious, does that fall on you?
I don't know, when, when I put that in there, I, I thought the same thing. I thought that that's a little arbitrary, but it's what the state has and I see a lot of other towns have the same language. I don't know.
It's a good idea that we parallel and streamline, if that's what other towns and the state's doing. It's a good idea that we just be consistent.
Just above that though, I, I changed, the previous ordinance said uh, that they could only be in business from 9 to 5. I changed that to be from 8 to 8. Again, I, I think I saw at least five or six other towns that had those same hours.
They're open till 8 on Verona, aren't they?
I couldn't tell you.
Yeah, I guess so. Do you have any idea?
A lot of places are open till
Till 8.
8 or 9.
Some 10, some midnight. Yes, some goes at midnight, in the bigger areas.
I think I saw something that they were till 8, so.
Can I just say one thing? The reason of updating packaging or the signs is that if you don't wanna attract younger people, that's the main, and like you, no good either, whatever. It's just being, you know, attractive to younger people.
Like, gummy bears can't be actually a bear or fish shaped, that'd be something that's like a square or triangle, you know?
Gummy squares.
Right.
Silver kids don't get candy.
Because you know they do a lot of stuff that mimics like uh, the nerd robes or
Yeah.
Just all kinds of candy that's in the regular stores. And if you lay it on your counter, a kid would figure out, hey, that's
Or they don't want Fred Flintstone on the signs so that somebody, a younger person would go buy it and say, Fred Flintstone on there, that's okay.
Right.
So um signage may use an image or images of marijuana plant as long as they do not exceed 20% of the sign base. No pictorial representation of other marijuana products or paraphernalia. I think that's getting towards like what she was just saying, you know? Have a giant ball of hair or a Any other thoughts on the signage? I know we've talked about neon and stuff, but we don't limit neon for anything else, so.
Is it based off the square footage of the facility?
Our sign ordinance has limits on the amount of attached signs. We added that a few months back to the sign ordinance. The sign, the freestanding sign out by the road is um off the top of my head, I wanna say it's a max of 100 square feet, which is pretty big. Could certainly put something in to limit that to smaller size if you want.
I think you just, you've been doing a lot of research, Luke, and and a lot of communities have gone to something just to make sure they control some of the signage. Nobody wants them to have a sign that you can't read.
Right.
You know, so I, I have no proposal to make, but I think we have to kinda keep it in mind.
So, I'd like to say something about the signs, a lot of places started going towards a smaller sign, but it's changed back now because you want the marijuana store to say it's a marijuana store so you don't have somebody walking in there and get surprised. You know, as long as it's not some crazy sign.
That hap, that happened to me in Rockland. Well, it happened to us in Rockland. We were walking down the street in Rockland. My girlfriend went, wow, look at that.
It was some sort, it was just a, like a piece, like a vase that was for sale. And she, and she was like, oh, and she, we, we walked in and the woman's like, oh, greetings, how are you? Can I please see your ID? And she's like, geez, that's odd for She's like, yeah, sure, looked at me to get
Well, I can see why they wanted your ID.
That's not what we're talking about. But anyway, yeah, so I, I get that, thank you.
More stuff right from the state really. No food products shall be sold, prepared, produced or assembled except in compliance with
You're about to
all all operation and other requirements of state and local laws, regulations, including and without limitation, food establishment licensing requirements. Any goods containing marijuana for huge consumption shall be stored in a secure area. All licensed premises shall be fixed permanent locations. Licenses shall not be permitted to operate marijuana establishments in a temporary location such as a kiosk, a town event or a farm stand. Pretty common, basic, but gotta say, that's why they like drive. The operation of marijuana establishment or medical marijuana establishment. Scroll down. Without the required local marijuana license or violation of the requirements of this chapter, so be in violation of this chapter. Fines shall be set forth for any provision of this article violator shall be punished by civil penalty of not less than a thousand dollars and not more than 10,000 for each violation. You watch Donald put the paper, 10,000. For, for each violation plus attorney's fees and costs to be recovered upon complaint.
Is this a mirror of the states?
That is not, that is uh I think that is either Brewer or probably
Do you know what the states amount is?
The state just changed it. If they had fines going from 10,000 all the way to 100,000 dollars. I don't know what they, the grant was, it just came out on the memo that we were emailed, but I didn't know they changed it.
You're reduced because they were too high, so the legislation, they, they
Just put a plus or minus on the end of it.
Yeah, that's all.
We'll just put, we'll just put a plus or minus on here. Just 10,000 plus or minus. No?
I'll be, I'll be honest with you, the reason I, honest, it's gonna be the, the thousand. You know, it's gonna be the low number.
Yeah.
But if it was a hundred dollars, that's not enough, that's kind of a slap on the wrist for somebody that's, you know, can make thousands and thousands in a day, so. You know, it needed to be enough to make them sit up a little bit, look at it. Uh, each day a violation is committed or permitted to continue shall become a separate violation and that's pretty much What?
He wants to retire. That's it, that's what it comes down to.
Compliance with other laws, marijuana establishment or medical marijuana establishment shall meet all operating and state, you know, that's basic. Every marijuana establishment shall allow code enforcement to enter the premises at reasonable times for the purpose of checking compliance with applicable state laws and the ordinance. Because if I have time to just pop in...
Well, I was gonna say, who chose the language of reasonable time as opposed to any time or...
Or business hours.
Or business hours.
Yeah, I'm gonna show up at midnight and you make...
Yeah.
The town may suspend or revoke a license for any violation of this ordinance or other applicable building or life safety code requirements. The town may suspend or revoke a license if the license has a state, a license if this, if the licensee, sorry, has a state license for marijuana establishment and or medical marijuana establishment suspended or revoked by the state. A licensee shall be entitled to a notice and a hearing prior to any suspension or revocation.
The town may, I mean, if they're already suspended by the state, that doesn't have pretty much...
Two separate permits, don't they?
They are.
They need one from the state and they need one from the town.
Yeah, but if they lose the state permit, they can still operate.
No, I'm just saying that we may, we have the right to do that. I think that's essentially "shall."
I just, I don't know, it seems a little ambiguous.
Well, because if you said "shall," it would be a problem because we said if there's a violation of this ordinance, in that case, it might be a "may," whereas the town may suspend, I guess the under, I guess worse if the town may suspend or revoke that second sentence, I could change that to "shall."
This is, like, all the contract stuff I've done with Mr. Boothby, like, we go through and we get into the contracts several times. Anytime there's a word "may" in there, like, that's like a trigger button, we take it out and decide, what do you want to see?
So, if the state has revoked it, then the town shall revoke it, tip for tat. But it still says they're entitled to a hearing.
I honestly don't know if that's a good idea, on the "may" end of it, because if the state revoked it for whatever reason, and then that means you have to revoke it, you may want to leave that "may" there so you have the ability to or not to. All of this is so circumstantial and the "may" allows you to be very circumstantial based on whatever goes on. I know that completely contradicts you, but Jake could be with me on some of your court here.
I wish I had the "may" because "may" is an option word. It's not a "you will." It's a "you might" or "you might not."
But if they've lost their state license, shouldn't they take away the town's?
I don't know.
Does it really matter? Because if the state suspends, then they're non-existent, correct?
Right. If they're getting into a legal battle with the state and they suspended the license, why would we want to get dragged into it because we did the same thing to them? If the state was wrong, why would we...
I just think "may" is much better verbiage.
"May" gives us the opportunity to treat it as a case-by-case basis.
I agree, I think the "shall" may drag you into something that you don't wish to become a part of.
If I may add, the "may" gives you the ability to suspend it till the state clears that up and then the state finds that they were wrong and they get their license back and you suspended them, then there's that issue you're talking about first. The "may" that the state shut them down and then they secured, they played open and not they, yeah, you're revoked.
Or it allows you to let them, I mean, operate you out selling marijuana because we have CBD products, we have the Delta Eights, the Delta Tens now, we have so many other things that can be sold if the state says you can't sell cannabis right now. So that will leave the town open to be able to do something like that rather than saying no.
What, the Delta Eight and the Delta Ten?
It's, they're hemp products, actually.
They're direct from hemp?
Direct from hemp.
And those are fairly illegal because it's under...
So it's not smoking?
Or are they, like, food or cream?
They could be hemp.
They could be hemp.
You did Delta Ten.
Or like a cartridge.
But it's not a pollution, it's just a...
No, there's no C C, so that's why, I just had one question to see if, have you considered hemp plants here because the state also issues hemp plants and I opened a cultivation facility here and a farmer comes and sets a hemp farm beside me, that's gonna affect what I'm doing here in cultivation? So I don't know if you have hemp included in your ordinance, but I would include that hemp should not be grown within a certain amount of cultivation facility because the hemp can spray and will primate my female plants, it'll shoot a ten mile radius. So if you granted me a cultivation site and you grant a hemp license beside that property, we're gonna have a problem.
That is a really large loaded question that is not on the topic of what we're trying to get through.
No, I was wondering if you had taken hemp into consideration into your licensing of...
So, does the fact that all of our cultivation facilities are required to be indoors make a difference?
The hemp can still get to the ground and everything, so I was just wondering if you had taken into account of any of that into account at all?
I haven't.
You might want to just make a note of it.
Yeah.
And I'm open to speak to you a little bit or if you want to, if you have your convenience.
Yep.
Let us get through this and I'll open up our public forum again, we can do that, can we Luke?
Where we want, in the chair.
Really?
We've been saying that all along.
Pizza Hut pizza, dial it up.
We'll also vote for that. You say yes to that too?
Of course, you guys would.
Well, they don't, I see them at all. I agree with that, both of us.
All right.
Keep going, Luke.
Production uses, okay, so a lot of this stuff is gonna be similar because what we did was we went from merchant tile uses, which was the stores, to production uses, which is the cultivation facilities, manufacturing facilities, and the product manufacturing facility, okay? So, we have the same language about emission of odorants or toxic matter, basically, you know, the same odor language as we had in the other section. Yeah, I think this one might be different. No outside cultivation processing or storage of marijuana, marijuana products or related supplies permitted with the exception of home cultivation of personal, without use marijuana. No marijuana or paraphernalia shall be displayed or kept so as to be visible from the outside of the building. All marijuana operations may provide, must provide for safe, sanitary, and secure disposal, and that's the same as the other section. This next one is specifically because as I told you, there's high hazards with some of the processing. So, this due to fire, explosion, and other hazards inherent to marijuana cultivation and marijuana manufacturing facilities, including but not limited to heavy electrical loads. Heavy electrical loads, hot lighting fixtures, CO2 enrichment, extraction solvents, which consist of acetone, butane, propane, ethanol, heptane, isopropyl, and CO2, et cetera. High-pressure extraction methods, flammable contents, therefore the owner must agree to annual inspection by the Bucksport Fire Department and furthermore must install Knox box at each locked entry, key gate, or door for emergency access. Installation of Knox box must be done in coordination with the Bucksport Fire Department.
Where'd the Knox box piece come from? Is that a state thing or from the other towns or is that something?
I'm a big fan of Knox boxes.
Yeah, no, they were helping us...
That's a system, the fire department here has used for many, many years.
Yeah, I know, I just...
Good system, it is, it's a good system.
Yeah, it was great when I needed it.
Yeah.
It was great, I'm just thinking, as high as the security is on this scenario, yeah, yeah, that'd be fun. I'm just saying, where did that come from? That come from the state or did we grab that from another towns?
I, gee, I do not think that came from the state.
Okay.
Yeah, I had something. Right now, we have a cannabis facility processing. By state guidelines, so maybe from the premise it has to be available, allow people to go in because if there's any person visiting the site or coming in, it has to be recorded and documented that they went in. And that's also a liability issue because something goes missing.
I don't think that's gonna be an issue if the place is engulfed in flames.
It doesn't generally, we're actually processed, we've been processed, I think, for four years now, we've processed in Winthrop and in Albion. And we do only C1D ones and we, you know, do use all of those chemicals and we've been, you know, we've talked to four different fire departments, we've had people come in and do tours in our facilities just to see what it's like. And within seconds, that facility is, I mean, the air just scoops all of the chemicals out. You know, we have fail safes.
You have to have a certified C1D one, which is the lab that's certified, to be able to process, and then your equipment also has to be certified. I'm just saying that a lock box might become an issue in that.
In what way?
Well, again, if nobody's in in there, nobody's supposed to be operating and the gas is supposed to be stored fifty to twenty feet away from the facility.
I wouldn't think that a firefighter or a police officer is gonna be going in there unless they have darn good reason. And they're gonna be on video because that's required.
It's just the safety aspect, so like whoever the fire marshal was in the area, they just train them on what to look for when they come in. Because we have logic in there that tells you what's going on in the facility itself. But yeah, I mean, it's just, I don't think it's a terrible idea, but it's just that you would want, whoever, like, I would want you to be trained on coming into the facility and when you look at the lock box, what you're looking at.
I'm not that used, I don't use Knox boxes. I don't let go in when you're there. So, no, they're for emergencies, you know, firefighters should never be using that unless it's an emergency.
And we just, we did have an instance one time where, in Winthrop, Mark, the fire department, came out and looked because they felt they smelled some gas and there was nothing there, but somebody was worried in the neighborhood. And so he came out and looked and went in there. It was just circumstances like that and it was like one o'clock in the morning. I felt bad that he had to go out there at one in the morning because somebody probably really complained. But, yeah, just so, it's just, I mean, it might be something that you would want to put in writing, but whoever goes into those facilities should have training, you know?
Has practice with us here when we get a new business. We've done it at the frozen food facility, we've done it at as small places as the old Jed Proudey. When a new business comes up, oftentimes they're integrated into the fire department's monthly training and tours, so everyone's got a good feel of the way of.
So, like, when we come into town with the processing, you know, we come to your meetings and we have diagrams and all the fire codes, the national, the local codes that we're adhering to. And then I've always sat with the fire marshal himself and the fire department and talk to him and go over it just to make sure that he's comfortable that everything is according to laws and regulations. So, you know, if the business has, like, say, all the certified equipment, that should be a no problem because the fire marshal should be able to understand that.
And we're also in a process.
And agree with how it should be operated and processed.
Perfect. I think Luke's gonna get a lot of an education. What do you think?
Well, I think he's really after it.
Keep going, Luke.
So, number six is the exact same security stuff that was listed in the merchant tile.
Okay.
Number seven is the exact same odor regulation as was under merchant tile.
Okay.
Number eight is the exact same violation of ordinance fines that we discussed earlier with the "shall" and "may" question. Compliance with other laws is the same. And that, number ten is the same too. So, a lot of that. And there's the suspension or revoke, then that's the same. So that stuff all is the same, but I had to put it in a different, I had to put it in both places because they're two different use types. So then that took us to rural uses, we took it out of rural uses, so I just had to remove all that.
Yep.
So that's why that's all in there and just crossed out. And then, I apologize for this, but marijuana testing facilities, I got nothing so far. It's going to be a lot of the exact same stuff as what you saw already.
Yep.
In fact, I'm not sure there'd be any differences between that and the production, but it's not a production, so it needs to be in a different category, so it's other trade uses.
Good.
So, then the next thing is definitions. And so you can see there the definitions for all the different things, these are all word for word out of the state laws. So, those definitions are exactly what the state's statutes say. So I've got the cultivation facility, marijuana establishment, production facility, marijuana store, marijuana testing facility. I took out dispensary because that's not actually a thing and I took out growing facility because that's not actually a thing. I added the caregiver retail store and I added the registered dispensary and I added the product manufacturing facility. Then I took out all the stuff that said retail because those were not state definitions and those were a term that is not used by the state anymore. And that thing brings us to the end. Let's get to the K. Any questions on that?
Good job.
I think it's always three, you put a lot of time in on it. And I thank you because you certainly made things...
Well, not done.
You summarized, you summarized it well.
Yes.
So, that takes us to the, that's the rules, then the licensing is a whole different category that we had to update in chapter six. So, we each have a copy of that. Municipal licenses required, town shall approve or deny the licensing established in accordance with this chapter. Marijuana establishment license expires December thirty-first of each year and is subject to renewal requirements as identified in section 1.7, which is the standard rules for all businesses in town.
Hold off on that. What is the town, what do we have for a fiscal year now? Are we still, are we back to doing?
We do, no, we do July first is the beginning of the new fiscal year.
Yeah, okay.
So Jake, town clerk, I talked with him about this because he's the one that handles licensing, not me.
Right, yep, yep.
And I asked him what works best and he said what works best, and what he's tried to do with all the other types of businesses with the exception of restaurants, is to have them all end December thirty-first.
Okay.
Restaurants, he can't do that because they correlate with whenever the liquor license ends. So, we keep the restaurants, whenever the liquor license ends is when the restaurant license ends, so it's random, he has to check all the time and it's cumbersome and he can miss things and if it all ends on the same date...
Then he knows.
So I said, "Okay, I get that. Do you want it to be December thirty-first or would you rather be a different time of year?"
Right.
He preferred December thirty-first.
Okay.
So then I asked the question, "What happens if we issue a license to somebody in October? You know, are we gonna make them renew three months later?" And what we said was, what we've done in the past, I guess, for some other businesses is we just, we give them the license for fifteen months instead of twelve months and then it becomes due on the following December.
Yep.
So, Jake and I talked about whether we should put in some type of language as to at what point that happens. So, you know, you're obviously not gonna issue a license in February and give them till two Decembers away.
Right.
So I didn't put in a date, we could do that as to like a, but it's only a one-time thing.
I'm not looking, I'm not looking for that, I was just curious to see what was best with our actual calendar year compared to the fiscal year for us. fiscal year for us.
So, okay. Um. Licensee shall provide to the town clerk their, annually, their license issue date with complete list of employees, owners, directors, or stakeholders. Applicant for a local marijuana license or medical marijuana license shall file in person at the office with the town clerk. A completed application made on a form provided by the town. Jake is aware that he has to create said application. The application shall be considered complete when it is, contains the information and/or items required in this subsection and is accompanied by the appropriate license application fee as listed in the town of Bucksport schedule of fees. We'll get to that. The applicant's full legal name, current business address, and mailing address for the applicant, proof of age, in the form of a driver's license, picture, identification. It's all basic generic stuff mostly.
Yep.
Um. Scroll down here. A copy of the applicant's state license. A statement of whether the applicant has been convicted of or pled guilty or no contest to specific criminal activity as defined in this article. Statement of whether any establishment in which an applicant has had an influential interest has in the previous five years and at a time during which the applicant had the influen, had the influential interest, that's a little, been declared by a court of law to be a nuisance or been the subject of a court order of closure. Evidence of all state approvals or conditional approvals required to operate marijuana establishment or medical marijuana establishment, including but not limited to state license as defined in this article. A state resale certificate is a separate thing, like all businesses that, like my shop, you have to have a resale certificate. And a state health license, that would be if they were doing food and stuff, they had kitchen. Um. One down.
Really?
It's okay.
If I could just, if they're gonna smell like, sell, smell, sell like bowling papers or any kind, they have to have a tobacco license. And if they're gonna sell edibles from the apartment that I own agriculture, they have to get a license.
Well, I don't think it says specifically those, it says.
I was just letting you know.
It says including but not limited to. So there's a bunch of them.
Yes.
An affidavit that identifies all owners, officers, members, managers, and partners of the applicant, the owner's ownership interest and their place of residence at the time of the application. A signed background check, release authorization with the application for each applicant that is seeking a local license. So it's not, you were talking about that earlier.
Mm-hmm.
It sounds, but like when that's listed out, it sounds like a lot of people, but those are descriptions of people that might be, but it's only the people that are seeking the license. So it might be the owner, it might be the owner and a manager, it might be the owner and a partner. It's not necessarily 20 people.
Yeah, I have a question. I have curiosity. So, so if we've already been vetted by the state and we've had the background checks, so we have to also do it locally too then? Because we have to carry the caregiver card or the, you know, the employee card. I was just curious.
Yeah. You know, that's, that's the way that I saw it being done with the town.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it's just, if you're, we can pull it from the state. I would pull it from the state rather than wasting money.
Well, and we might be able to.
I was just curious.
Depending on how this goes tonight, it seems like it's going well. This is gonna get sent with any changes we propose tonight to the police department so that Sean and Dave and Denning can all look at it and weigh in. And if they don't think it's necessary, then we can remove it, but for now, it seems like a good idea to me.
Okay, no, I'm just curious.
Local licensing authority shall have the authority to impose any conditions on the license, so this is you guys, and the council. Shall have the authority to impose any conditions on a license that may be necessary to ensure compliance with the requirements of this chapter or to address concerns about operations that may be resolved through those conditions. Failure to comply with any such condition shall be considered a violation of the license.
Yeah.
So that just gives you guys a little bit more key to say, we're okay with this, but we wanna see this.
Yep.
No license, so this is really obvious stuff, but no license will be granted if any of the following apply. The applicant's less than 21 years of age, the applicant has failed to provide information required by this article, or has falsely answered a question or a request for information from this application form. The establishment is in a location where marijuana establishment is not permitted. Establishment is in which the applicant has had an influential interest has in the previous five years, been declared by a court of law to be a nuisance or been subject to an order of closure or been convicted or pled guilty, no contest to specified criminal activity. Person who has had a license for marijuana establishment or medical marijuana establishment revoked by the town or by the state. An applicant who has not acquired all necessary state approvals and licenses and other required local approvals prior to issuance of a local marijuana license. Licenses under this article shall not be transferable to a new owner.
I just need your feedback.
Licenses under this article are not transferable to a new owner. So if you guys are licensed for a store and then sell said store to somebody else, that person would have to come get a license from the town. A state transfer license shall require a new local marijuana license. That's the same, basically saying the same. Licenses are limited to the location in which they are issued and shall not be transferable to a different location. A license who seeks to operate in a new location shall require a new local license for that location. Sorry, I'm not gonna break the job.
May I ask another question? On the conviction of a criminal activity, like in the state, if you're convicted of something that's a blue collar, does not affect you, I'm sorry, does not affect you getting a license, but if you're convicted of something that's drug-related, that prevents you from getting any type of license or setting up a business, is this the same thing or just any type of?
No, it would be, I would assume a class C or above. Even if you have a felony that's not drug-related, they still will, they will still event you a license by the state. It's gonna be a drug-related offense.
And if it's drug-related, if you were 10 years old.
I was just wondering, you're gonna follow that guidance?
We just hire a lot, a lot of people, so.
Well, this is the licensee, it's not your employee.
No, I'm not, yeah, like just say me, if I had a felony, but for some other crime not related, but the state will still offer me, I mean, approve you to get a license. It just can't be drug-related. If the offense, even if it's a felony, if it's not drug-related, it's okay.
That's why I think you're understanding, if the caregiver card is issued, that means you automatically are cleared criminally from the state. And so making them do another criminal clearance at the town ordinance will kind of redundant because you can't be issuing a caregiver card for the criminal clearance. So people who are applying for licenses, find those things, it's kind of frustrating because we've already been cleared criminally by the state and then having to come and do another criminal clearance here, we should just have to show our caregiver cards to you that is proof that we are criminally cleared or the state would not issue that to us.
I understand what you're saying. Every time I buy a gun, I have to do a background check even though I have a concealed weapons permit. It's kind of the same thing.
Well, I understand that. I say it's gonna, I guess, conflict with the state. The state gives you a permit to set up a dispensary, even though you have a felony and then if you have criminal.
All of this language is gonna go up to the public safety bill and get reviewed by the public safety director and police chief as well. So he's, we're in the review process of this now. So he's gonna review it as well before it goes to the council.
As a community, we have the, like, prerogative to say we don't want any felony. If we wanted to do that.
That's correct.
We can say whatever, you know, whatever we want.
That's correct, yes.
And I'm thinking, I'm thinking like that. Honestly, if you're a felon, probably don't wanna give you a license to operate a store.
You lose the, I mean, you lose the right.
Yeah.
To a lot of things, right? So.
Mm-hmm.
And I would, I mean, I would value, you know, whatever the public safety.
Exactly.
In their, in their field, right?
Right.
With that, with that though, I'll just throw the comment in there. Dave would probably agree with me. You and I have probably come across a lot of felons that are felons because of minimal scenarios of past laws 40 years, 40 years ago that by today's standards wouldn't apply that still carry that. So there's a lot of circumstantial scenarios.
There's also a lot of repilments of cannabis conditions, felony conditions.
Well, that's, and that's fluid. That's changed a lot in the last 10 years, but specifically the felon scenario.
I just wanna say, with education, none of us have real records. We're not being promers or anything.
Yeah, I'm just, there's a lot of.
I wrote, I made a note. We'll talk about it more and I'll ask, I'll ask the public safety director and deputy chief and stuff of what their opinions are and we'll look at it.
Yeah.
The changing tide of the scenarios is just crazy.
All right, so where did I?
24.8, I think.
Nope, we covered that. I think we're on 24. Yeah, 2412.
12.
Operation of a marijuana establishment, oh, this is the same language.
Same, same, right.
And then licenses granted, if granted, shall state on the face the name of the person, the person who it's granted to, number of, the license issued and to the licensee and the expiration date and the address of the business. Then the license shall be posted and if it's been placed at or near the entrance of the business. And local marijuana license renewal application shall be subject to the same review standards as applied to the initial issuance of the license and the same notice requirements as a new application. As part of the renewal process, the council shall consider compliance from prior years based upon that review and may add conditions to any future license to correct, abate, or limit past problems. And then the next section has absolutely nothing to do with marijuana, but we have made a concerted effort to take fees out of all of our ordinances and put them all in the master fee schedule.
Yep.
And this is one that somehow got missed. So I'm just removing it here. This is all word for word in the fee schedule already. So it's just duplicate information and makes it much easier for us to make a mistake and have two different things.
Right.
So then the last thing was I had to put a definition in this. It's marijuana establishment. I put in here, it's any business or individual that grows, cultivates, prepares, manufactures, packages, tests, or sells marijuana adult use. That was just so I didn't have to put 10 different definitions in this ordinance.
Wasn't it in the definitions section as well?
For the other ordinance?
Yeah.
I might have put it in there as well, just to cover my bases.
May I extend a little bit? When you acquire your license. So you mentioned that, uh, when you get your license until December.
He probably didn't.
I think this is just like your regular license. If I get my license date like in February and in April, the state denies me a license, I could still operate if I didn't tell you the state shut, didn't say something. And sometimes there, there'd be any paperwork, but they're not always up to speed that. Since I renewed with the town, I could operate without a state license for, till December. You know, and I'm thinking it's like the liquor, that, I know it's a burden, but if you do it at the same time, that kind of thing could not happen. And then unfortunately right now, all the fees, I know they change every, they're very backlog and they're not always.
So, so let me ask you this. If your license is due to be renewed, say, July 1st, is the state gonna get you a new license on July 1st?
Well, you're supposed to apply and by July 1st, you're supposed to have that.
So they're now, everything's, most of it are going to online for everything and they're notifying you two months now before your license is up. And so they're, they're saying at this point, since they're notifying you two months ahead, there's no excuses for you not to have it.
But are they getting there and done?
Not always. And so this is what they've done as a fix, is if, let's say we, we have a store and we're running the store and we had caregiver licenses and we wanna hire somebody to come in. If they have a caregiver card, they can always come in and work as long as we've submitted the application. So, so that's just, that's their fix for right now for that.
But as a license itself, you know, it may not be beginning of July and then if for some reason they deny me, I could be operating because you could.
You could, but you'd be operating in violation of the state, right?
Of course.
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
I know they do, but you'd be, you'd be at risk of getting fined by the state, I think, so.
I'm just saying.
It's time to consider.
The way you do their liquor license, that might be something to look at because, you know.
We've just seen a lot of stuff.
That way.
It deserves consideration. It deserves consideration.
Put all that on hold for a minute. We've got, so we reviewed appendix K.
Well, I had one couple more things to, sorry.
Okay.
I wasn't quite done.
All right. You were done with the sheets, I thought you were.
I'm done with that sheet, correct.
All right.
I don't have another sheet for you, but the fee schedule.
Yeah.
So there's some pretty crazy fees out there. And a lot of these people that have come to us and told us they wanted to put stores, they already have stores in these towns that are charging these pretty hefty fees and they're paying them already. So.
How, how?
They're charging a bit double, called good.
Oh, will they have, will they have to get them to come here?
Reviews may potentially increase just to be in line with other communities.
Yeah.
What do you got?
In Brewer, a registered dispensary or a cultivation facility is $500 annually. Adult use is $3,000 for the initial application and $1,000 annually after that. They don't have anything in here for, while they have prod down, they don't have a testing facility listed in Brewer. Maybe Brewer doesn't allow testing facilities. Waterville is much more specific. Waterville for a marijuana store or dispensary is $5,000. A marijuana manufacturing or extraction facility is $1,500. My guess is the reason that that is less is because there's a lot of equipment in there that's getting personal property tax whereas a store, not so much.
Right.
It's my guess, I don't, because those are big difference.
Is that a $5,000 fee for the state or for local?
This is local, this is what Waterville is charging, yeah. They're charging a consumable manufacturing facility. I don't even have that, but they charge $100 for that. a consumable manufacturing facility. I don't even have that, but they charge a hundred dollars for that. A testing facility, they charge fifteen hundred dollars a year. And then under cultivation, they break it down by tiers. So this is something that I didn't get into because it doesn't really matter rules and regulation wise. Whether it's a tier one or a tier four, the rules are the same. But licensing wise, a tier one cultivation facility can grow up to thirty plants. They can have unlimited number of immature plants and seedlings, but they can have a maximum of five hundred square feet of plant canopy. When you go to a tier two, they can have five hundred to two thousand square feet of mature plant canopy. Tier three is two thousand to seven thousand and tier four is seven thousand to twenty thousand. Twenty thousand is the max, but they do have oh, what do they call it? It's not a waiver. It's a you know what it is?
So after a couple of years, you allow you to increase from twenty?
Right. There's a term from that, but I can't, but anyways, every, Waterville says every two years you can increase, ask to increase another additional seven thousand square feet. So the way they have it set up is a tier one is five hundred dollars. A tier two is twenty-five hundred dollars. A tier three is four thousand dollars. A tier four is seven thousand five hundred dollars. And if you do the expansion every two years, it's an additional two thousand dollars per expansion. With a max expansion level of may not hold more than three licenses with a total combined plant canopy in excess of thirty thousand square feet. So I, but you, you know, they're, they're, you're talking close to ten, ten grand a year for a cultivation facility. A full tier four with the extra.
A year?
Yeah, that's a annual license fee. That's what Waterville is charging. Brewer doesn't have.
They could hire you an assistant.
Huh?
They could hire you an assistant.
That crossed my mind.
So the state also charges a five thousand dollar fee. So you have the five thousand from the state, the five thousand from local, and then if you have the rec dispensary, it ends up being like fifteen grand in the long run.
So you say the state charges five thousand? Is that regardless of tier size or are you talking about a store?
Yeah, they're.
They do charge you by the tier.
Yeah.
Okay. The state does. And I know some towns, they're, they're really going after the industry.
Well, there's no sales tax revenue for this, for the town, that is for the state. And the property tax is pretty limited on the stores, but that's why I was saying with the, I think like the testing facility and the manufacturing facility, the reason that the fees are less is because they're making money on property tax of the equipment. But there's not much equipment in a store.
Right. And we don't do direct sales pretty much with the process. We're not doing direct sales.
Right. You're doing wholesale to, to stores and stuff, so.
And, and, and that's if that, because a lot of times, you know, we have artists and we're only processing for the, for everyone else.
So, I mean, I, I'm not gonna lie, those are, some of those are some huge numbers.
But if they're parallel across the state?
Well, I, that's why I didn't write, I was gonna update the fee schedule and bring that for you tonight. I didn't do that because I haven't seen other towns to do a really, this is two towns. That's not enough.
So let's table it till next month.
Right. We don't have to.
Look at what's parallel.
We don't have to have the fee schedule set
Yep.
in order to approve the land use thing.
Yep.
We have to have the fee schedule set before we actually approve a license.
Yep.
But it's something that I wanted you guys to be thinking about.
Yep.
What do you think is fair? And, yeah, I mean, if a store is already in Waterville and they're paying five thousand and we're only charging a thousand, then we're leaving four grand on the table. But I also know what our town council is gonna say, which is we wanna support and encourage business, not.
Right. Medium, streamlined, average.
You know, I see both sides of that and I don't really, I don't know.
I honestly think a lot of money in the town should go back to the town and not to the state, but that's just my opinion. I really.
Well, and I have no idea, I mean, people. I have a gun shop. Had it for twelve, no, fifteen years. People think you make a ton of money when you sell a gun.
Right. You don't.
You make fifty bucks.
Right. There's a lot of fees.
Uh, yeah, the fifty bucks is before my overhead. That's just, that's what I make on the actual gun. You know, I mean, people think you're making thousands, so they'll come in and they haggle and, so when I think of that, the reason I bring that up is because people think you guys are making.
So much money.
Boatload of money.
Right.
And I see the place on Verona and I see, it certainly looks like he's making a boatload of money.
And he probably is because he's the only one in the area.
So.
The cost to operator.
Are high. So.
And everything.
And your licenses for the state are high.
The tax is outrageous when it comes to rec. It's outrageous. You're paying three hundred dollars just for a pound of cannabis. That's your tax.
But you're passing that on to the consumer, I assume.
Well, and but, but right now, the, the market's flooded. So, I mean, I could go buy a really nice indoor pound of cannabis for, you know, like five hundred bucks to seven hundred bucks in some areas where last year it was over two thousand dollars. I just wanted to point out too that the O D office has been sending to the O C the office, so they've replaced marijuana with cannabis. I suggest you do that in their new ordinance, just to be forthcoming to like moving forward.
I do that, but all the definitions I put in here line up exactly with the state statute.
Yeah.
So until they change.
They did send a letter out that they changed.
But they haven't changed the statutes. They changed the name of their organization. I know, because I called them a bunch.
But have they changed the statutes? There's a change.
Like I said, the tides are changing all the time.
It's hard to stay up to date with.
They are using cannabis now in the basement now and.
So what next do we need to take tackle work out on that?
Uh, so I guess I just was, I guess I kinda wanted to get a feel for where you guys felt we should go with, with the fees.
Any other thoughts on the fees?
They seem out of line with the fee schedule that you, you know, when you compare them to the fees for other businesses, they seem steep.
Oh, by far.
But those, those are almost ridiculously low in this day and age, you know?
Well, and I'm looking at changing those too.
I know, so.
I mean, it's these kind of numbers.
Well, no.
No, they're, I told somebody, my sister down in Jersey what the liquor license was and she like, thought I was kidding. So, you know.
I don't have that front here.
Here it's like, it's on the page.
It's like twenty-five bucks or something. I don't, I don't know.
What else do we need, Luke?
Okay.
It's on this.
So as I said, the Airbnb language, I didn't get updated.
Yeah, we'll ta, we'll table that till next month.
The last thing I had was the changing of the zone four, and let me bring that up.
For the downtown boundary?
For the downtown boundary.
Franklin Street.
On Franklin Street. So if you look, whoops, I'm sorry.
My sister has gotten wind of that. Boy, she's upset about that.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Alright, well, we'll talk about it. So.
I was right next to the the one they just sold, the, the Nixon's boat, no.
Oh. You still on the call? So that's what we're talking about.
Did that get sold?
Is it all in the Masonic?
It's a, it's a box.
Church two.
What church?
The old.
Methodist church?
Methodist church.
What are you talking about? No, the Methodist church is, that's in a residential, well, it's in the village zone. And what they're proposing there is multifamily, which is allowed. So that doesn't need to change. The Masonic Hall building, so this, you can, you can see. This right here, the pink is what is currently zoned downtown and the orange is what's currently zoned village. I'm gonna turn the zoning off so you can see the map better. So this is the Masonic Hall here. This is the police department over here.
My house is up in the top like.
Oh, I know. I see the picture.
What we're proposing is to incorporate this boundary line of that property into the downtown district. So just basically move the line up to go around that property so that they can put a wine bar in the basement of that facility. So the newspaper printed all kinds of stuff. It's not accurate. It's shocking. They, they wanna have residential on the first and second floor. And have a wine bar with some food. I don't know. I, I don't think it would be considered a restaurant. It would be a a wine bar that serves some food.
Like the Verona wine design.
Which we already kind of, we've already got that sort of, but. So the, you have to go up the steps in that main entrance. That's the first floor. The downstairs is like where they have a little snack bar thing right now. Correct. Like you, where my cursor is right now.
Yeah, yeah.
There's like three steps down to go down in there.
Right, right.
So I've already, obviously these folks, if, if you've made the zone change and they proceed with this project, they have to come to you for planning board approval anyways. So we would do a site plan review on that. So we're not really here tonight to discuss their plans, because yes, they already know they have to hire an architect and engineer. They have to sprinkle the building. They have to meet ADA. They know all those things. So we don't need to get into that today, but what we do need to get into is does this change make sense? Does it fit?
No.
No.
Uh, no, it doesn't make sense. We're doing it for one facility, right there. It doesn't make any sense to me.
I am all about business. You know that.
Yeah, me too, but I, I'm not gonna go up and, and cut a slice out just to make that happen there.
Has anyone else ever come before this board just for, just like that purpose right there? Has there ever been one of those?
I don't know.
I.
I mean, we do have some funky zoning lines if I zoom out.
You've been here a while?
Well, they've done some contract zones, but they weren't in the village, obviously.
Okay.
That's the one that was on Main Street that got.
Show us, Luke. Show us what else we got. Show us we got a mess of high shape messes to make this better.
So your downtown goes kinda it follows these different property lines going around.
Looks like there's been some car outs.
Uh, that's good.
Back in the day when it started, but it primarily falls down Franklin Street.
Go back, go back.
It's going kinda slow because there's a lot of image on here.
Okay.
So it goes up Buck Street. Goes up to Franklin there.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It cuts off, cuts off Buck Street and doesn't include Franklin there.
Goes down Franklin to, I think all the way to the mill.
Okay, so it doesn't include anything past Franklin right now at all?
At some point, there has to be a line. There's like up by where the old mill used to be, there's that hair salon, right? That's on one side. On the other side, you couldn't have a business?
Uh, hair salon, yeah, you could.
Okay.
Certain types of businesses you can, certain ones you can't.
Okay.
So in this case, a restaurant or tavern is not allowed in the village district. You know, I it's right beside the fire department.
Doesn't matter to me. Okay, I'm gonna tell you straight up. I like the line, okay? If somebody wants to move that to the next street over or something and talk about how that's gonna help the community in any way, I'm all for that discussion, but I don't like carving out. Never have.
So there's also, I mean, how, how much interest has there been in that building?
That's a good point.
Every person sitting here interested in that building has wanted to do something like this with it.
I mean, I mean, there, there has been, that building has been sitting there in the hottest real estate market in the history of this country and it still hasn't really generated, like hasn't moved, right?
This is. But I can tell you that I feel that probably no less than fifty phone calls from potential buyers, but every one of them wants to do something that we don't allow to do in the village.
Yeah.
And that's just the way it is.
But that building and parking lot are right there. It's right there.
Let the town buy it.
No, town's getting that.
Are you speaking as a neighbor?
No, no, no. I am speaking, no. Actually, it, it wouldn't bother me. But I'm speaking as far as I know where Franklin Street is and I know what one side is, I know what the other side is. And before we go carving out, then the next one down, well, you did it for that one, why can't you do it for me? And, and you know.
Then before, if you look.
No, down at the bottom right. Probably back in the day when they went and did this up, that was already like that. So then Franklin became that line going down. Now, to me, we don't wanna grow that line unless we're willing to accept that we're gonna allow change throughout the whole community there.
We just recently changed this line and took that out of village and put it into rural.
Where is that?
What's that property there?
That's Silver Lake Road right here.
Yep.
This is where those animals were for a long time that everybody was flipping out about.
Yeah, yeah.
Took that out of village.
That was part of village and it was taken out. So I mean, that was.
That looks like a cutout to me.
Why, why was that? I know the power line runs through there.
Because they wanted to do stuff that was only allowed in rural and not, not allowed in village.
Really?
So, so you're saying, how long ago did that happen?
Couple of years.
So, so the precedent is there.
The precedent's always there for any change you wanna make. But I know how I feel about where we are in Franklin.
The council felt that changing a, a zone line made more sense than doing a contract zone.
Well, we've done there with the contract zone where they didn't like the contract zone.
Yes, but they, they also have approved contract zones for things like my cottage project. They aren't opposed to contract zones if they think there's a benefit to the town.
Right.
In this particular case, because I went to them about this project and took their temperature and they were supportive.
And that's what a town council is for?
So the solar thing, I, and C2 that isn't zoned for that. And I went to them and took their temperature on that one and they were.
The contract zone and that didn't go.
They, no, because they said there's no benefit to the town. Or very, very, very little.
Well, I, I don't know. I think.
You live right near there.
Yes, it's, it's, it was a hundred feet from where I live, so.
So do you see it as a problem?
Personally, I, I don't see it. If there was residential, you know, upstairs and a commercial downstairs, I don't think that would, you know, affect the neighborhood that much. It's, you know, especially you got like, what are you gonna do? Because, you know, police are right there. They, you know.
Oh, no, that's not, that's a non-issue. I agree with that.
I would think at some point in the past, that call was probably hot. I don't know that it is now, but I think.
It's, I don't know. I, I went back in the records. I think they bought the, Masons bought that building for about seven or eight thousand dollars in nineteen sixty-four.
I remember you saying.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, it's, you know, now they're, what they're asking for. I, I mean, I, I toured it myself. I thought about turning it into either Airbnb or like condos. But the price that they're asking plus like what you need to do on the inside.
It's huge.
Yeah, it's, it's tremendous. I mean, you have.
Someone's gonna run a business out of it. They gotta plan to make some money somehow.
It's, I, I don't think having a vacant building forever is like good for the town. I don't, you know what I mean?
Agree.
Every time I walk past that old Methodist church and the lawn is like sixteen feet, it looks terrible, right? No one's doing anything. Basic maintenance on that. I'm not talking, I'm not even planting and fancy. That makes the town look worse.
What's our timeline on this, Luke? Is this something we need to, you need our temperature on this week?
While the people that are looking at buying the building are hoping that we will. Well, the people that are looking to buy in the building are hoping that we will have, tonight would be the first meeting, next month would be the second meeting. And if you guys approved it and sent it to the council, obviously there'd be a public hearing at the next meeting and the council would have their first reading. And then their second reading would have another public hearing. So, there'd be two public hearings and... I don't know. Do you wanna move forward, have a public hearing next month and discuss it more and then make your decision or do you wanna take a vote now and?
Is it?
As long as it doesn't hurt their scenario, probably give us a month.
Well, I mean, if you're all against it, then there's no point in getting their hopes up and just tell them now, but I mean, if it's.
So, I would ask people in the neighborhood that are the most directly affected, what's your, what's your opinion on this?
That's what the public hearing would.
Right, right. This, but, and people don't always know about this, but I, you know, but I would reach out to some people, I mean, just as a neighborly thing, what would you think about this? Without, I mean, very neutral, just, just engage, get a temperature on it from, from the people.
Could send out a butter notices like I would with a site plan. I don't know what the, I don't know what the, uh, the typical stick practices of when you're changing a zone, do you, do you notify the butter? I don't see what makes sense to me that you would.
Well, you, I would think. The butters are already aware of it, believe me.
I know some.
Exactly, yeah.
We have a two-year-old sister that, that's, joins that property.
What you just pissed.
And she hit me.
Who? Being apart from what the newspaper printed is.
Right, well, and.
Right at the bottom of Buckley?
And it makes.
That's your sister?
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
Like, that's a reasonable.
I'm a property right.
Purpose for that building. That's a reasonable purpose for that location. All of it's been in B for a while. All of it. It's on the other side of the line. I don't know yet.
I mean, we're not talking about a rowdy.
Right.
Tozers too.
Right.
The police department's right there.
Right.
There's gonna be residential above it.
I, I think I, I would, you know, it'd be great to mull it over for, you know, a period of time.
I agree.
You know what I mean, and, and.
Yeah. Digest that scenario because I'm fighting with myself over here.
All right. So, I will put it on the next meeting and I'll put down a public hearing.
Yeah.
And I will send out a butter notices.
Okay. Discussion items, members of the board, discussion. You have none? Very good. All right. At this point in time, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn. I appreciate you folks coming, but had you been here earlier when we started our meeting at six thirty, we had a time for a limited public forum. You passed that and we've been here for quite a while, so we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'm getting hungry second.